Today, we have the University of Nebraska professor Dr. Adam Houston, who has come to Northstar to talk to the students about the equipment that is used in meteorology, specifically the mobile Doppler radar and the Mezzanet.
We learned about how the Doppler radar works and like how it emits like radiation to find out how big a particle is and if it's going to rain, if there's storm, how like we can predict if the weather is going to change or like if there's a thunderstorm that might affect like our property or something like that, which is interesting.
I like most science fields. I like, I just like learning about, the weather is very applicable because it's all around us.
These students don't have a lot, may not have a lot of experience with this type of weather in Nebraska. So being able to see all of the equipment that goes out to help keep people safe is empowering so that they know what to do to keep their families safe in the event of an emergency and also just be well-informed citizens in the event of a storm warning.
I think it's cool that they're able to go so close to the storms and detect these things.
Sometimes it like you can see a clearer like image of the storm better than a Doppler radar because a mobile radar can get closer to a storm than a fixed radar can.
I think it's very impactful to see the actual equipment that goes out. This is, you know, equipment that's very expensive, but it's also being used quite extensively out in different environments. It's taken a beating. You can see that there were hailstones that have been hitting the equipment. And so students can see that this is dangerous work also, but exciting and really important.
It was pretty cool. And I liked how at the end it was just spinning fast and it's constant. And what I really liked is how like all the presentation and the visuals were like really clear and like you could see like every part and there's like the key on the, on each of like the sample picture. So you know how fast the wind was moving or something like that. Our next unit, we are learning about storms and stuff. So we can use this knowledge to help us during our next unit of geoscience.
The importance of students being able to interact with people like Dr. Houston is that they get to see science in the real world. They also get to see how the science that they're learning in the classroom is also applied to careers and potentially drive future interest in going into these fields.
Well, heck, I'd want to take that class.
I don't know.
We're also to warm up now.
Okay, this Board of Education regular meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd is called to order. Laura, would you call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Here.
Dr. Rowner.
Here.
Mr. Shavastav.
Present.
Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted and available at the main entrance of the room. Next, we have approval of minutes from our April 8th board meeting for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as published. Next, item number six, the Board of Education vacancy. So some background. First, we want to start with recognizing Lanny's service. He's a longtime board member who died unfortunately on April 9th after a battle with oral cancer. Lincoln Board of Education would like to recognize Mr. Boswell's 12 years of service at the students, to the students, family, staff, and community of Lincoln. Mr. Boswell was first elected to Lincoln Board of Education representing District 5 in May of 2013. During his service on the board, Lanny had held many leadership positions in the board and affiliate organizations, including being both the board president and vice president of the ESU-18, the board president of this board, their Career Academy inter-local board president, the Safe and Successful Kids inter-local board president, and the president of the Nebraska Association of School Boards, in addition to his service even before a board member. I first met Manny Lanny when he was on a parent committee interviewing superintendents, which eventually led to Steve Joel. And so he was active in a lot of stuff even before being a school board member. We're grateful for his service. He'll be missed for the big things, even little things. And as I saw this, I was looking at this and right in front of me, Lanny would do other little things like for a while he was into his 3D printer and he printed out these little coasters with the LPS logo that a lot gave him to all of us and maybe you've been up here since. And so we'll miss both the big and little things of Lanny. Anybody else want to make any comments? Okay, great. So the result is we have a vacancy on the board representing District 5 with the recent death of longtime board member Lanny Boswell. The board recognizes there are several options in filling in the vacancy until the term finishes on May 19th of 2025. Because of the short timeframe and to provide continuity for the business of the board, board leadership recommends that board consider appointing Mara Krevolavik, who is currently the only candidate running for District 5. Mara received the majority of the votes during the April 8th city primary election. The appointment would be made to finish out Mr. Boswell's term for the Lincoln Board of Education ESU-18 ending May 19th. Depending on the results of the election on May 6th, all newly elected board members will then be sworn in on May 19th at the annual organization meeting for the Lincoln Board of Education and ESU-18 Board. Do we have a motion? Kathy?
Pursuant to policy 8314, the board hereby suspends policy 8210 and any other applicable board policies, regulations, or practices to this action and does hereby temporarily appoint Mara Krevolavik to the District 5 seat on Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education to fill the vacancy created by the death of Lanny Boswell, with the temporary appointment to commence immediately upon administration of the oath of office and seating and to continue for the remainder of Lanny Boswell's unexpired term, which was to end at 6:00 PM on May 19th, 2025. Make that as a motion.
Do I have a second? Don?
I second.
Do you have any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes.
Mr. Shavastav.
Yes.
Dr. Rowner.
Yes.
Congratulations, Laura.
Mara, I would ask that you join me at the podium. Having been appointed by the board to fill the temporary vacancy in District 5, the law requires that you be administered an oath of office. I'd ask you to raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you'll obey the Constitution of the United States and the State of Nebraska and diligently perform your duties as a board member of LPS and ESU-18 to the best of your ability? If so, answer yes, I will.
Yes, I will.
At this point, I would ask you to sign the formal oath of office. Having completed that, I will provide the formal oath of office to the recording secretary, and you may now be seated as an official member of the LPS Board of Education.
Okay, congratulations, Mara. So next, we have Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success. Item 7.1 Sustainability Report, Brittany Weiss.
All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am Brittany Weiss. I am the Sustainability Coordinator for LPS, and I'm joined.
I'm Alex Kofelt. I am the Assistant Sustainability Coordinator.
All right, and happy Earth Day, by the way. In case you didn't notice, today is actual official celebration of Earth Day. So it's even more of a special occasion for us to be here this evening and share some of the ways that LPS is celebrating the earth and thinking about the environment and our natural resources all year long. So we are very excited to share the recently published 2024 Annual Sustainability Report. We are going to be doing very quick, high-level highlights. There is a more detailed report available on our website, which we will include on our last slide here. So just want to cover our team real quick as well. So Alex and I are on the team, as we mentioned, and then we also get support from an internship team as well. Maggie and Katie are current interns with us, supporting things like school gardens and waste diversion programs. And we're really excited that our next round of interns, starting with us in May, are actually both LPS graduates. So that's really exciting when those opportunities start to line up. And as a team, just as a refresher, if you're not familiar, so we really see our role as helping LPS be better about just utilizing our resources wisely and how do we operate more sustainably as a large organization in this community? And then how are we also providing those opportunities for engagement and leadership for our students and staff in the area of environmental stewardship?
So in terms of waste diversion, in 2024, as a district, we kept about half or over half, excuse me, of all of our waste out of the landfill. So that looks like recycling everything from paper and plastic bottles to things like books and electronics. And our waste diversion efforts take a variety of forms depending on what the given project looks like. So sometimes that's securing waste funding for equipment purchases, and sometimes it's facilitating curriculum collections, like guest speaker presentations in kindergarten garbology classroom units. 2024 was also a great year for energy efficiency at LPS. So as a district, we set a personal best of 31 buildings receiving Energy Star certification. We did also see, compared to our baseline sort of year of 2019, decreases in overall energy use, even as the district continues to grow in our footprint. We have two sets of solar panels. Those are located on Northwest High School and Standing Bear High School's grounds. Those are the first sources of renewable energy that were established in the district, and we do have plans for more similar units to come in the future.
All right. So hopefully you've already heard the exciting news that we have now officially received our first three electric school buses. And that was through the EPA Clean School Bus Program. So it's not actually the first electric transportation we've had in the district, though. We do have one electric white fleet vehicle as well. So thinking about the impact of our many fleet vehicles and how we can continue to electrify there. We also have EV charging stations available at 10 sites across the district. So that's something that we're able to track the usage and collect that data and share in that annual report. It's not just about electric transportation. We also support active transportation, so things like biking, walking, rollerblading, whatever it may be. We love to support and connect with our schools that like to organize Walk to School Day or Bike to School Day activities. For example, Clefcorn organized a Walk and Roll to School Day last fall. We also have been doing a better job connecting with some amazing bike bus parents. So these are parent volunteers who are supporting navigating the realm of biking to and from school and kind of creating that safe structure for those students to participate. Gardens and outdoor learning are another big area, especially this time of year. We're getting lots of requests and interest. So we support gardens in a variety of ways. Of course, our school grounds are a fantastic setting for students to explore and learn those skills and as a resource for the community. And one way we support that is through our garden gathering events. So we hosted three of those events in 2024, showcasing successful examples in the district, connecting with some of the amazing community partners that are really essential for that work to happen, and then also diving into some specific topics like how to support courtyard spaces, which can be challenging. We are also currently in the midst of a farm-to-school grant. So that's our Nourishing Northeast Lincoln Project. This is supporting four schools in the Northeast area, which is actually a food desert. So really important to just help with food access, but also connecting with local farmers and supporting urban agriculture activities. And then we love to give a shout out to our Nutrition Services Department. They do a great job connecting local food into our school cafeterias. So we like to share those numbers that they keep track of as well. Trees is the exciting heading here. Arbor Day is coming up on Friday as well. So we've got our big environmental week this week. We did, as a district, plant 75 trees across sites in the community this year. And then we also had a fantastic collaborative Arbor Day celebration last year at Cahill Elementary. Their fourth grade students were able to plant 40 trees at next-door Cahill Park through an amazing partnership with all those organizations listed there. And one of them was Northeast Fuse Program. So actually, through that partnership, both of those schools were able to be the first schools in the district to receive Tree Campus K-12 recognition through the Arbor Day Foundation.
And when we have schools participate in sustainability-related activities like tree plantings, like Walk and Roll to School Days, they are able to earn points through the Green Schools Recognition Program. So last year, Mickel Middle School and Don Sherrill Education Center were our top points-earning secondary and elementary schools. Each of those schools did earn $500 in sustainability funding awards to use towards future projects.
All right. And just yesterday, we had our third annual Students of Sustainability Summit, or SOS Summit. So this is something we put on for LPS high school students that have an interest in climate action and sustainability. So we were out at Standing Bear touring the various sustainable campus features there, like the renewable energy, the rooftop garden, other water management features they have. We also had some great speakers there from the city, from the university. We had the Omaha Students for Sustainability Group there. So some peer-to-peer networking that was really fantastic. And we had city departments there with volunteer opportunities that high school students are able to participate in if they want to take action right now. So it was a really great event that we were able to have just yesterday. And then some upcoming events and celebrations we have. We are going to do that Arbor Day celebration again, this time out at Robinson Elementary. The fourth and fifth grade students will be going next door to Waterford Park and planting 50 trees this Friday in collaboration with several partners there. And then on May 16th, we're headed to Elliott Elementary to do a collaborative Bike to School Day celebration. All students at that school will actually be able to participate in a series of bike and pedestrian safety activities. So we're really looking forward to that, again, in partnership with some city departments and then the community learning centers. So that was a very quick overview. We have tons more information in our annual report, which is available on our website. There's a QR code there. If you just search sustainability on the LPS website as well. We're on social media if you would like to follow along with amazing activities that our schools are doing all year long and things that our department shares with community resources. We also have a monthly newsletter that gets released. So if you would like to receive that newsletter, any of those email addresses are fine to reach out to. We will get you connected and get you on the list. So that's our quick overview for our Earth Day celebration this evening, and we're happy to take any questions.
Have any questions? Annie?
Remind me when you started all this.
Well, I can't say that I started all of this. We had an amazing recycling coordinator who started back in the 90s, Marty Franty, if some of you might remember her. But I started with the district in 2014 when we were just beginning our compost program, which has been district-wide now in our cafeterias for several years. So I've been here. It'll be 11 years in May.
Because it does strike me as my memory is a lot of this is the blossoming of this is amazing. Just that's a lot that we have going on that I was not aware of. I mean, I was aware of the compost program and then slowly all that happening and the moving to trays. Our trays are compostable.
Yep. Yes, compostable trays. Again, partnership with Nutrition Services, supporting that effort.
Yeah, and gardening. Now, I know that Scott has heard me say this, but I would love more rooftop gardening. We need green roofs. But so congratulations on just a solid amount of work that we just totally need as we move in forward in the world. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. I was wondering if the, on the website, report also includes our geothermal, your activities with construction debris. I mean, you folks do so much. I just want you to brag a lot.
Yeah, we could have talked for an hour, but we were told to try to keep it to five minutes. So yes, we have actually Communications has recently done a great article on our geothermal systems. We were talking about it yesterday at the summit with the students of, you know, we need to be talking more about this, you know, those energy-efficient systems. LPS is really a national leader when it comes to our geothermal systems. So we were sharing just at that site alone, how many wellfields and all of that. So yes, we talk about that in the annual report and on our website. We have more information about those energy updates that have happened to our facilities. We also have an entire section dedicated to our construction waste management efforts. I don't know if you remember the numbers off the top of your head. We did not put them in our slides.
So yeah, that was one that didn't make the cut for time for this time around. But we were, I believe, 76 or 78% of a construction waste through our remodeling and new construction projects in 2024. So things like concrete, rebar. We didn't have ceiling tiles this year. There weren't projects that required it. But something that our project managers do a phenomenal job of communicating with contractors who are in our spaces. Again, improving our diversion rates is always something that's top of mind, and we've got a lot of folks helping us make that happen.
78% is pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah. And we've had that going since the 2014 bond issue. So we've really had an opportunity to work with a lot of contractors and subcontractors to establish the standard for the district. And we've heard from other community entities, we've heard from the university, from the city, that they're, you know, interested in that and seeing that be easier because of the leadership that LPS has shown. So that's really exciting.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work.
So I just have one thing to add, because this was kind of knocked into my head when we started doing geothermal. And this is for the taxpayers to say, oh, yeah, they wasted all that money. The reality is we heat and cool the buildings for about the same cost as it used to using the traditional boiler system. So we now get to have air conditioning in every building, and the heating and cooling is much more efficient and better for the environment. So remind your taxpayers, this saves you money.
Yeah, absolutely. The cost efficiency is there, the comfort for occupants, because of course, we want to have safe and healthy and comfortable spaces for our students and staff to come to. We know it's impactful to have those systems. And it's also important for electrifying our buildings so that we can someday have that renewable energy source, that that's a possibility when you start electrifying your buildings. So LPS is way ahead of the curve on that. So that's a really exciting accomplishment for the district.
Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, being in the environmental field in my day job, I have to congratulate you and for all the great work you and the district has done by reducing our environmental footprint, even though we had a 15% increase in our footprint of the district. So great job.
Yeah. And of course, we do want to acknowledge that in this report, you know, we are collecting because this is a collaborative effort across the district. We do not take credit. I think the first geothermal systems were installed before Alex was born. So this has been a longstanding effort and, you know, a prideful moment for the district, well beyond us. Of course, Scott Weiscamp's leadership with operations has been a huge, huge supporter of these sustainability efforts long before it was called that. So we know this is a district-wide effort, and it really takes a systemic approach to have these accomplishments.
Scott, wasn't that in the late 90s? See?
Oh, my God.
Mid 90s.
Yeah, I love to comment, like, in planning, we've showed that stat for years now, that despite the fact we actually grew our footprint to new high schools, a new elementary school, we actually use less electricity now than six years ago. And that's money that doesn't go to a utility company. It gets invested in our schools, which is great to point out to people. And that's a result of decades of planning and Scott and his crew and some prayer board members who might have helped make that decision, you know. So one other question is, do you get much feedback from the students and parents about about these programs?
Yeah, we have some really engaged parents. We have some really go-getter, leader students. We would love to connect with them more. That was some feedback we received at our event yesterday. We told them, and we're going to say the same thing here, please invite us out. We would love to share more. If you want to give us an hour to talk, we'll happily come talk to your club, your classroom, you know, your PTO organization. We love sharing what we're doing and helping. It really, it has to be a team effort to accomplish these types of activities. So we get positive feedback, but we also just hear we need to be connecting more out there. So that's why we really appreciate the time this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Ag. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we have item 7.2, the PAR update. Mike? You'll probably remember, but please tell people what PAR stands for, because people forget.
It's in the, it's in the presentation, actually. We're going to open right with that. Our Prevention, Accountability, and Restorative. I do need to, so first of all, good evening, board members. Mrs. Krevolavik, welcome to the, to the board. I think I had an associate superintendent rookie learning moment here. You may recall the previous board member meeting. I followed Dr. Salem, who opened by saying, I already met my goal. And tonight, I'm following Brittany's team, who is rocking it with all of their goals. So I need to pay closer attention to the order in which these presentations are scheduled. Maybe I can open and try to set the bar for someone else. Do appreciate your time tonight. I want to start with just a few moments of gratitude. First, I want to thank you as a board for both the time tonight and, more importantly, for your support of this work that we're going to discuss this evening with the PAR Behavior Framework. As you know, the development and implementation of a district-wide behavior framework is perhaps the most significant undertaking in this district's history when it comes to supporting and improving positive student behavior outcomes. This is big, big work. It's multifaceted. It is really complex. It's challenging and rewarding as we navigate through this. It's really, really broad in scope, but it also has to be very nuanced in its implementation, because every number that we'll talk about is a, is a student. Above all, this work is essentially our responsibility to the students and the families that we serve, and we're excited to have the opportunity to do it. As you know, the LPS PAR Behavior Framework does represent two years of explicit work to develop the framework. And it's now nine months into its first year of implementation. None of this would have been possible without your support and with really, without the tremendous and tireless support of the team of people that we get a chance to work with every day. That being said, I'd like to thank a few groups and a few individuals. I first want to thank Carmen Pedrosa, who will be presenting tonight, Student Services Supervisor. Carmen wears many hats, and I know that you've heard from her both at your board meetings and throughout committee meetings over the past two years. Carmen has been the visionary, she's been an architect, and she's been a builder on the development of the PAR Behavior Framework. And she's really made improving student behavior outcomes kind of her white whale, so to speak, along with her team of positive behavior team leaders. And they really have worked tirelessly to get the PAR Behavior Framework boat out of the dock, keep it afloat, and navigate what can be choppy waters anytime you're on a maiden voyage. I also want to thank Ryan Zabawa, who's going to present tonight, our Director of Student Services, for his commitment to supporting the work that's been taking place within his department on this project. Ryan has played a critical role as a thought partner, as a leader with regard to resources, context, perspectives, both as a teacher, as building administrator and principal, and contributed considerably to the thinking that goes into ensuring that the product that we put forward in term, in form of framework is substantively purposeful and useful in the hands of those who are doing this work at the building level on a daily basis. We also appreciate the support of the executive team members and the directors that are in the Teaching and Learning Department for their work to align and support practices with the PAR Behavior Framework and the support staff who have collected a significant amount of data. They help us analyze it, they help us organize it so that we can make it actionable as we see where we're at and chart the course ahead. I also want to give a shout out of appreciation and thanks to our colleagues at the Lincoln Education Association. They have afforded time at their meetings for us to brainstorm. They've also been thought partners and provided really good feedback to help us stay connected to what's happening in the buildings so that our work is purposeful. Finally, a really big and perhaps the most significant debt of gratitude and thank you goes to the administrators, the teachers, the paras, the behavior interventionists, and the support staff, who really are the boots on the ground when it comes to supporting positive behavior. They're the ones making the work happen. The staff in the building directly carry this out every day. And our hope is that the work that we've done and will continue to do will continue to help them keep their focus right where it should be, which is on helping students have positive outcomes and experiences in Lincoln Public Schools. Tonight, what you'll see is an update on the first year of the implementation, which is ongoing here for at least, I forget what my son said, perhaps 22 days left in the first year of school, or in this school year. We plan to share some key insights from the field test of the Accountability Matrix, which is a specific component of the PAR Behavior Framework, as well as provide some up-to-date data on behavior specifically aligned to the measurable outcomes in the strategic plan. We also want to share some information that has come from us embarking on a pretty ambitious plan to solicit some ongoing lifetime feedback from the people doing this work at the buildings. And so you'll see that tonight as well. I'll circle back to last week and a reminder that the work that we're doing connects directly to the strategic, the all-mains-all strategic plan. We are in year one of this strategic plan. And just a recap, that we have four priority areas that are identified within the strategic plan. The two that are most relevant to the work being done in the PAR Behavior Framework are student well-being and outcomes, where there is a strategy specifically aligned with the PAR Behavior Framework and the Accountability Matrix. I do think it's important to also mention that when we're able to develop and provide resources that support systems and structures and resources for positive student behavior, that this does contribute to staff well-being and outcomes as well. And so I think it's important to highlight that that priority is also connected to this work. We do have specific measurable outcomes that are articulated in the strategic plan. Two of the three on here will be specifically spoken to tonight. The first one will provide some live-to-date data on total suspensions. We're also going to take a look at disproportionality with regard to, for all student groups and suspensions. Two caveats as we prepare to look at the data that I would offer as a reminder. First, it is year one of a large, comprehensive, five-year project. I would love to say that we've solved it, and we can move on and set different goals. That is not the case. We've got data that we believe is initially positive and data that highlights some work that's still to be done. We understand that. We will not get too high or too low, we'll continue to monitor trends. But we wanted to be really transparent on what we're seeing on our data right now. Secondly, we do have several weeks of school left, and so this data is at best incomplete in that we know some things will occur between now and the last week of May that will impact our data at the end of the school year. Buildings, as well as our district teams, engage in a reflective, formal process to pull in together that data, to look at what trends we have. Really helps guide our planning for the work that is to come in year two. Where this work lies is in the second initiative here in the student well-being and outcomes aspect of the strategic plan, intentional supports and relationships for all students focused on positive behavior to build strong, safe school communities. That's where the PAR Behavior Framework lives. With that, I'll turn it over to Carmen Pedrosa to share with you some highlights on the first year of implementation.
Thank you, Mike. I just appreciate being able to be here to talk with you about behavior. I know I live it every day, but I appreciate getting to share kind of the story and the glimpse of this work with you guys all to date. As Mike said, this is a comprehensive work that we've been doing over the course of two years now. When Dr. Larson was here last year, he visited 40 buildings and programs to ask them really, you know, how can we support behavior? How can we support your work with our students? And really, the themes that came out from that were consistency, consequences, explicit expectations for both staff and students, support for teachers, and communication. And so really, that has driven the bus on all of this communication, all of this development. And you're going to hear it woven through hopefully tonight as we talk about feedback and our work towards this framework. In terms of the implementation this year, it's really been heavily based in professional learning with a lot of different collaborators. Our teachers, as you can see in the screens in front of you, the, this is just a small glimpse of our opportunities with our teachers. Our administrators, we have monthly and regular opportunities to work with them on how they can support their teachers. Our classified staff, we know that their work with our students is as important as the teaching and learning that's happening in our in our classrooms as well. So thinking of creative ways that we can support our classified staff. As well as our CLC and agencies, the work before and after school is that extension of the school day. So we want to make sure that our CLCs and our agencies feel supported. And thinking about ways that we can partner with UNL, they are the biggest contributor to our student teachers. And so thinking about how we can go upstream to think about how we support our future teachers here in Lincoln is ways that we're trying to be creative with as well. In terms of supports, Dr. Gilati talked about that collaboration with our instructional department. So thinking about our school improvement workshop every summer, thinking about ways that we can both support academics and behavior while supporting culture as well is something that we are continuously working on. Thinking about how we can support our elementary students, going back to those themes of feedback we were hearing from our elementary teachers, we need time to teach them those routines and procedures. And while we know that's important in secondary as well, front-loading that at elementary so that we're thinking about those routines from day one was something that we heard. And so we implemented that again this year. Each building has an individual at their building, our PAR liaisons that help support this work. And as I've mentioned, those ongoing opportunities with our administrators and teachers. A component of the framework, the PAR Behavior Framework, remember that A stands for accountability. We've been implementing that over the course of this current school year, the 24-25 school year. And really, the simplest way that we can explain it is it's just a tool to help us make decisions. It doesn't make the decisions for us. We've been making decisions about due process and discipline for years. This just helps us be consistent within our buildings and across buildings as we think about supporting 70 buildings and programs in the area of behavior and due process. And thinking back to those themes that we knew to be important, it helps support that consistency, that theme of consequences, and thinking about how we communicate preventatively and how we communicate after situations and incidences happen. And I'm going to go through here in just a little bit some of the key components of the matrix here. But I want to start with that responsibilities of students. As we think of where do we start, it really falls back into the responsibilities of students. As you, you know, as you're aware, that is kind of what guides all of this work as we think about, you know, how we support behavior, how, you know, when things happen, how do we anchor back into what we know to be important? And that's really that responsibilities of students. And so this is just that visual that all of our, anytime that you access the matrix, you're going to come right back to this responsibilities of students. So this is just a kind of a messy version a little bit, and it's a complex version. But the first thing that I want to say is, when we think about this Accountability Matrix, this is a blank document that you're seeing in front of you. This is not something that our teachers have to fill out. This is not something that our administrators have to fill out. In the live version of this, this is going to be something that is pre-filled out for our administrators to reference before they make decisions. And so things I want to point out is kind of going left to right here is those levels of behavior. When we think about where do we start with behavior, we don't go right to the consequence. We don't go right to the accountability of what's going to happen. We think about the level of disruption, we think about the severity of the situation, and then from there, we work. You're going to see consequences and accountability. What are those things, those responses that are going to occur after that behavior happens? And those range from, maybe it's a parent meeting, maybe it's maybe an in-class movement spot that they're going to go and they're going to process, all the way up to kind of our most severe consequence, and that would be our out-of-school suspension. But when we think about those level-one behaviors, those minor behaviors that are going to be classroom-managed, we're not talking about out-of-school suspensions with that. Then we're going to move into those response responsibilities. So what is my responsibility as a student, as a teacher, and as an administrator? We talked about explicit expectations. I want to know what's expected of me for all parties involved. That communication loop, again, going back to those themes of development, communication was a big thing. You know, I want to know as a teacher, I want to know as a staff member, what's happening with a student when a behavior occurs. And that's fair, that's fair to ask for. And so we're working that into our processes and systems. That re-entry piece, we want students in our classrooms, we want them to be successful, and we want to prevent further things from happening. And so what does that system look like when students come back into our classrooms? Is it a conversation? Is it a meeting? What are things that we can put in place so that these things don't continue to occur? And then as part of accountability, we know that teaching and reteaching is really important. So we have developed what we have called IRR activities. So those are instructional, reflective, and restorative activities that maybe a teacher can do or maybe a behavior interventionist can work on it with a student or an administrator, but giving them the resources so that those teaching and learning opportunities can be maximized when those behaviors occur.
All right, so now we're going to give you a snapshot of the out-of-school suspension data for the past four years. This data is year-to-date, and we run this weekly, and it includes active and inactive students. So you'll see anybody that's ever attended Lincoln Public Schools for this year in this data. The first graph is, shows you the total number of unique students out of school suspended by year in kindergarten through 12th grade. The student suspensions can range from one period of one day to up to five days. So these are unique students suspended out of school for one period or more, up to five days. The second graph represents the percent of students out of school suspended in kindergarten through 12th grade. This data is also year-to-date. Can give you a second to look at that. This one is fairly busy, but this table gives a grade-level breakdown of the 2,499 unique student suspensions. The yellow band along the bottom is the risk ratio. The risk ratio represents the likelihood of a suspension of one group compared to another group. In this case, that comparison would be all students. We want the risk ratio to be between 0.8 and 1.2. So in looking at this, for example, in the table, seventh-grade students have a risk ratio of 2.1, which means they are twice as likely to be suspended compared to all other students. And if you look at this, you'll see that risk ratio in middle and high school is substantially higher than in elementary for out-of-school suspensions. And as part of our our goal, we're looking at reducing disproportionality. And when you look at the 24-25 risk ratio by ethnicity, we see that the, there is a higher suspension rate for students who are Black, African-American, two or more races, American Indian, Alaskan Native. All are at or above 1.7 on the risk ratio. So clearly, we have work to do. And I thought this would be useful. So this final table shows you a four-year comparison of risk ratio by ethnicity. And this is also year-to-date for each year. We see a consistent trend with Black, African-American, two or more races, American Indian, Alaskan Native students having a higher risk ratio than other students. And we'll, at the end, I'm sure you have some questions about the data, so we'll give you an opportunity to ask that, and I'll kick this back to Carmen.
So what Brian had just shown you, he showed you all of the quantitative data, the numbers that we're gathering. These next couple of slides, I'm going to share some additional quantitative data, and then I'm going to share some qualitative data in terms of what we're hearing from teachers, what we're hearing from staff. Because as they help develop the themes, we want to hear how we're doing in relation to the work that we've been doing. So in terms of asking questions such as, I feel that the professional learning on the PAR Behavior Framework has provided support and resources for staff. When we think about these 843 responses, and I actually just looked before the meeting, and this is almost, we have almost 1,000 responses now, so this has grown over the course of two days. 79% agree or strongly agree that the professional learning that they've been receiving is supportive of their work. When we think and ask about the consistency piece, again, part of that theme, and we think about that relation to prevention and accountability, 75% of staff are reporting that they agree and strongly agree that that has improved. Thinking about that clarity piece, those expectations, I know what I'm supposed to be doing. My students know what they're supposed to be doing and doing it. 79% have reported that they agree, strongly agree, that they feel that that things are a little bit more clear now. As we think about that consequence piece and that appropriate accountability for those minor and major behaviors, that report comes back with 75% agree, strongly agree, that that has improved. And as we think about that communication piece, that closing that loop, staff have reported that 69% agree or strongly agree that they've been, received improved communication. And we know that while we would want 100% across the board, when we think about the comprehensiveness of our district, 1,000 responses, you know, we definitely have work to do, but still pretty pleased with strongly and agree and strongly agree data that we've received so far. As we think about that qualitative data, some key takeaways that we know and we've been hearing about, I'll start with the first one on top. It's nice to know that we haven't been out of bounds. I think anytime that we put a new tool in place, sometimes there's that thought process of like, have we been doing something wrong? As we think about that community piece, is our community thinking that we're doing something wrong? But really, what we've heard and what we've felt as administrators and making those decisions is, I was reaffirmed that I was making decisions that were in line with what our district is supporting and that I can continue to grow in this area as well. As we think about areas of improvement, thinking about how we can ensure alignment, and again, that clarity with our responsibilities of students and how we make decisions. So as we think about moving forward with our responsibilities of students, are there adjustments that we can make to help support due process and discipline? So some celebrations, just. So some celebrations, just to kind of sum it up for us. Things that we're hearing, things that we're feeling, consistency and collaboration. That our staff feel that consistency has improved, that transparency piece, that guidance has improved so that I know and I feel supported with my decision-making, which helps my well-being as a staff member. That communication and alignment has improved and that I feel like I know what our strong foundation builds from. And again, it's that reaffirmment that we knew what we were doing. There hasn't been any, you know, magic bullet that's come out of this that nobody's ever heard of. It really just kind of cleared the air a little bit to go back to our basics that we know to be important. As we think about opportunities to grow, our work's not done. It'll never be done. But really, what kind of guides this work ongoingly is we need to continue to refine our practices and responses, especially as we think about our K2 students. That doesn't mean that big behaviors aren't happening at K2. It just makes us reevaluate how we can support those big behaviors when they do happen. Making sure that we have ongoing opportunities for teaching and learning of our staff so that we can continue on in this track that we're on. Increasing that alignment and clarity. Thinking about how we can leverage our student information system as we think about making database decisions. How can we leverage our partnership with Edgipoint and our synergy product so that our schools can have real-life data, that it's in a concise place, that they can make decisions that are good for their systems and their building? And then again, how can we be creative with our ongoing support for our staff as we continue to, you know, face sometimes big behaviors? How do we, how do we support our staff to feel comfortable with addressing those behaviors so that teaching and learning can happen?
So just a quick summary and some next steps. Going from year one to year two is much different than going into your initial year of implementation. Year one, you've done all your homework. You've tried to build and make decisions to the best of your ability. But you do have to start somewhere and then learn where you started and how it's working. And as we go from year one to year two, we really need to let the feedback that we're getting and the data that we're seeing help drive our decisions because we want what we do going forward to be directly connected with what's happening to buildings. And so some summary and next steps that will continue to refine and expand resources for all staff. We have come a long way since I was a first-year teacher in 2005, where my most memorable, meaningful planning for behavior management was the time I spent talking to the late Al Bach, who was helping set me up my classroom with a Citizens Issues textbook and an emphasis on building relationships. So the fact that we have this resource that will continue to breathe and grow and expand in conjunction with the work that's occurring in the instructional side with what Dr. Clark is doing, we've just come a long way and will continue to grow. Continue to provide the ongoing training and practice to help ensure consistency. It is a tricky thing to chase when you're working with a landscape that moves. As a building principal, we thought we had everything planned out for our focuses one year. And then something called Tic Tac Challenges occurred. We didn't have that in our plan. And so you have to be nimble and able to adjust but stay true to the principles that you set out to achieve that year to support students. We really need to leverage data and the feedback to guide improvements. We think some of the work that we're doing with Kirk Langer and Computing Services will help us with that. Also, continue to collaborate with our collaborative partners, including LEA, a great voice to help us stay connected to perspective and just continue to review and update materials. And some of these things you have seen and will continue to see with the goal being that we'll continue to breadcrumb things and get in the cadence through the committee process. Student Learning and Technology Committee have seen some of this and will continue to see additional pieces as we continue to stair-step this going forward. We do want to create a public-facing web resource that allows our public to just see more of this work at their fingertips as well. And so those are some things that we're working on. We greatly appreciate the time and the support. There is a lot to this. We're happy to answer any questions or take any requests that you might have at this time.
So this is my second dose of learning about PAR because I saw some of it at the Nebraska Association of School Boards meeting, which you did an excellent job. We had a lot of good feedback. The one thing I didn't see was how are your parents responding in all of this? I think that's a really important piece of data because if parents buy in, it makes it much easier to implement something that might look like a sweeping change, but really, it's just, it's just basic rules. But parents get really nervous when you change the words that they're used to using.
Yes. We have some indicators on the District Perception Survey that will speak specifically to this. And so those have been earmarked, and we'll look at that data. We have some baseline data, but we'll use that. And it's directly connected to, do my students, do I understand what's expected or receive communication? So we'll pull from that data at the end of the year and use that. We've also had presentations with really anyone who invites us. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago, Carmen and I presented to Parent Advisory Council at our quarterly meeting. We're happy to pick up the phone. We've taken phone calls from parents who've said, hey, I heard or I saw this, or my building referenced this. What can you tell me about it? It's actually one of the key pieces of feedback we've heard from that, almost overwhelmingly, has been you can't let the management of student behavior be something where people look at a chart and go like this and go like this and come to a conclusion. It's been overwhelming. Do not lose sight of the context and the individuality and circumstances surrounding each behavior and each student. And so we've taken that feedback as well. So those are a couple of avenues that we've heard and will continue to look at, both qualitatively and quantitatively.
And the second thing is I got to see some of this in action because I'm now touring all of my schools for the second time this year. I saw them at the beginning of the year when everything's new. And now they're kind of comfortable in their spaces. And it just seemed quieter than in the past. I don't know if that's the right word to use. But the students were listening, even if they were maybe disruptive earlier. I just saw the way to handle it was very consistent. And it seemed like everyone has moved in the right direction of let's all find this way to do this together, knowing that everybody's an individual, knowing that we might not always have perfect tools, but we always have perfect behavior. I did notice one thing you might want to add to your thought process because I still see, don't see it in middle school, don't see it in high school. Can we get rid of cell phones in elementary school? Just a thing I'll throw out there.
We appreciate that feedback. And the credit for what you saw goes to the people who are implementing it at the building level. They're the ones who are taking this. However, a goal of this work at the district level is to reduce, I can remember as building administrator, and many of our longtime administrators will remember that, you spend a lot of time trying to come up with what can we or what could we do? And our hope is to take that burden off so that their energy and focus is not on figuring out if we can get the data, have the data, or what solutions might exist. But they have a comprehensive foundational resource where that heavy lifting has already been done for them. And they can go to that and tailor that to meet the needs of what they're experiencing in their building. Because depending on who we talk to, they may have a whole different range of things that happen to be showing up in their end-of-the-year data. We want to do that work for them so they can spend time directly supporting the teachers, families, and the students. So I'm glad that that was your experience. And that's a credit to the buildings that you're in who are carrying the work forward.
Good job.
Thank you for a good presentation. I noticed that you don't have disaggregated data for sped students or for low income. Why is that?
We do. We did not put it in this presentation. I'd be happy to send that to you. We have a whole, probably, and we could send probably another 20 or 30 slides. What we did is we just chose, in the essence of time, to stick directly to the measurable outcomes that were in the strategic plan. We track that weekly just like this. And I could send those charts to the entire board as well.
I would like that. Because we're also doing data collection with our Safe and Successful Kids Initiative. And one of the things that comes up is that sped kids and low income often have unmet needs. And so I want to make sure that that is at the forefront of our thinking as we go through this because, as you say, each student is an individual and there's context. And if we can address their unmet needs, then perhaps we would have better outcomes. So could you just briefly tell us what kinds of interventions that, example or two, that are starting to occur because of PAR?
Speak to some of the more common.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I would say, in terms of interventions, and I think I already mentioned that there's not a lot of new bright and shiny stuff that came out of this. A lot of it was interventions that we've re-enlivened. We've gone back to the drawing board. A lot of things that we know to be important is that we don't just talk about them once. We talk about them repeatedly. So as we think about teachers that were hired four years ago, they might have gotten a heavy dose of an understanding of a certain intervention, such as check-in, checkout, that is all centered around specific and targeted feedback around goals. But maybe in the last couple of years, we haven't revisited that professional learning. And so just reminding our buildings to go back to those teaching and learning for our staff so that we know and understand what the purpose of them are, how do I do it? Like, what are the actual actions that I need to do as the teacher or the staff member? And then looking at our data, making sure that we're then providing additional supports. Or maybe, you know, a lot of our students don't need those supports anymore. So then we can titrate down and have a least intensive supports for them in place.
So the reason I ask the question is that for the public, for parents, there's often this feeling that, well, what are the consequences? And so I think it's good for us, you don't have to paint us a detailed picture, but to have some specific examples, perhaps in your fuller report or on your webpage or something so that people can kind of wrap their head around what you're talking about. Because this feels very kind of up here and intellectual. And we all know that behavior is really down here on the ground. So then that leads me to my last question. And the idea is, how does consistency across buildings occur?
So that's a great question. And as we get to work through this, Ryan and I were just having this conversation. So we have a couple of avenues that we look at that. One is a recent report that we were just working through today is looking at the violations and the rights and responsibilities and then comparing that to the dispositions, which the disposition would be the outcome or the decision that was made by the administrator on the referral. And this is, and that's why year one is fun, is you get to see, well, where are we close and where are we not? Because when we have guidance and a process, we still have learned that there are lanes in there. And what are we seeing as far as trend lines? So an example that I would give you is, on several levels, you may have an option where if it's on the high end of that level, you may go with an out-of-school suspension. On the lower level of that same behavior, there may be an in-school suspension. We want to take a look at when are buildings choosing to go with one over the other. And I would go even a step further to say that an area right now that I don't think will change over the next few weeks is really looking at a suspension that is less than one day. And are there alternatives to how we might be able to look at managing that? Because it is unique students. And we also know that AQUEST and state accountability system is going to be including data on out-of-school suspensions. And while we're still kind of waiting for what exactly or how that will be defined, that's an area of looking at, okay, for these specific behaviors, what are we seeing for the number of infractions that have occurred? And do we have a scatter plot still? Or are we getting closer together for each of those? And so we'll do some case-by-case looking at specific violations at the end of the year to see what have been the most common violations and what have been the violations that still have a broader spectrum, which would mean less consistency still that we need to hone in on further. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I would love to see.
It's a great question. Yeah. There is a lot of data that supports this data. And as we get in a cadence of providing our annual updates, it will be exciting and fun to see what we learn year over year. When the data's going well, we're not going to throw a parade. And when it's not going in the direction we want, we're not going to get down because we know it will move and variables will change. We do want to see trends overall going in the right direction. But we're committed to doing the work just incrementally and steadily over, as long as it takes for us to be the district and say, we've solved out-of-school suspension and solved disproportionality.
I really hope that occurs. I would, I'm just going to, I know you already know this, but I'm just going to make that statement. You know, what we do in school has a huge impact on individual students' lives. And they will remember some of these incidents and responses for the rest of their lives. And it will guide how they interact with institutions, with other people. So it's really important that we go and, as you say, take into consideration things like context. That doesn't mean we walk away from that issue of responsibility and accountability. I think where children gain pride and then grow up to be confident adults is when they know that they can self-regulate, that they can go and interact with the larger world in a positive way. So keep up your good work, and I'm looking forward to your data.
Thank you. Any?
Thank you very much. You know, it's interesting because we, in my recollection, that we made this one of our goals because there was such an outcry of we have a behavior problem. We have a behavior problem after, especially after the pandemic. And I really do appreciate that. What we have done here is use our own strengths to figure out our own community's need and response. I mean, I'm from the kids who got misted, you know, that they were able to take the behavior program and made it into a verb. So I think this is some really great, just taking the time we've done to do the framework. And the reason that we're doing it is because of knowing our own space and our own, who our kids are and what our community is and so forth. I do have a couple of questions. My question is not so much, I do think we need to have a parent input, but if and when, how are we going to get a student input to it? Is that in the plans?
Yeah, so there, I'll speak to a couple. But I know that we've, throughout this whole process, so students will also complete the perception survey. And we have the same indicators on there so that we'll look for data on there related to this specifically. We've also had an opportunity to take this work to different student groups that exist at buildings. Could be a caucus group. It could be a student council group. at buildings. Could be a caucus group, it could be a student council group. I don't know if there's any other opportunities that come to mind. Those are the first ones that I think about. But we've been more than happy to go out. As this has become more known, we've had student groups who invite you. It could even be the student newspaper who want to ask some questions about it. But we've been more than willing to go out and share information and then take their input and feedback too, all while reminding the students the same thing with our parent conversations of, that's what year one is for, to take feedback and see what the outcomes look like. But we do have some quantitative measurables on that perception survey we'll be watching closely as well.
Yeah, because the other thing I think about is that, that when we were also writing, thinking about creating this as one of our goals, one of the ways it was first written was we were going to change student behavior, to which my response was like, well, it's not on us. I mean, behavior is communication. So I think it's kind of great to be kind of looking at that. But I'm not sure if I've seen that in this. So that I would be very interested to see how we're really looking at the student's perspective, because behavior is communication in either what's happening in the classroom, what's happening in the school, the tenor of things and so forth. So I would be interested in kind of seeing that in next year of like, where did we come to understand from that aspect? The other thing I was wondering is, the disparity obviously is still there. And we see the same disparity in our Safe and Secure Kids Report. And we've been doing that for several years, and the disparity hasn't changed. It stays consistent. And this looks like it's the same kind of consistency. So I don't know if I expect you to have an answer to this, but two things. Like, are you using that report as a, you know, it's a second, to me, it looks like a secondary set of like, what is happening, when, with whom, and how, as well as the matrix that you're using. But also, how are we able to analyze this and assess it and make improvement on it in-house? At what point in time do we perhaps need an outside point of view to say to, I mean, I just said, I love that we're making this in-house. But it's been one of my issues with our SSK reports, is at what point in time do we need, perhaps, I don't know if it's an outsider point of view, but we need an out-of-the-box point of view of like, how can we possibly change this to change the disparity? Because I'm not sure if we ourselves can do that at this point. So I guess I put that, you asked for questions or ideas. I mean, that would be something that I would really be interested in, in having brains smarter than me who know more what we're doing. But this is one of my biggest concerns of like, moving that needle. And I think Matt would have said to me, Annie, it takes three to five years to figure out something. So I wasn't expecting it in year one. But I will be expecting it by year three, hopefully before. Because I feel like in our SSK, we haven't really seen that needle move. We've seen a lot of other needles move for a lot of positivity. But that's, to me, is a very important needle for us to move for our community.
We agree. And I'd love nothing more than to have that answer for you right now.
Yeah, I would know, yeah.
We are, so an initial idea and a brief thought is, the first step of getting our feet set of where we are and how we respond in certain circumstances, and getting consistent in how we respond, will help address some of the disproportionality in outcomes, as far as what the consequences are. However, once we have improved consistency in how we apply outcomes, it becomes, okay, there will always be some behaviors that, I'll use a hypothetical, there will be some behaviors that will probably always result in you going home from school. So then it becomes making sure, once we've gotten consistent with when we feel that's appropriate, how do we stop that behavior from happening? Because that's ultimately the root cause of whatever the next steps or the actions are that we take. And so our hope is, by getting consistent in how we respond, will free up and allow us to drill down into what are the actual behaviors that are happening most prevalent to the group, to the grade level. I think we all noticed there's a slight curve, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and then back down suspensions, which there's a lot going on at that phase of life. But that's my initial thought, is we map out how we think we can try to tackle that. We are not opposed to outside resources and looking at that. This is kind of a half step. It does not involve the in-depth analysis of the SSKI report. However, I know that that happens at a kind of an inconvenient time. And so we did want to provide, the reason you see some similarities is I see this in response to some board feedback, is kind of a half step to give you a peek at that, instead of having gone the whole year in between SSKIs. So that was a little bit intentional as well. We also know that there are districts that are on version five or six of their matrix, and their consistency in response is above 90%, and their disproportionality has not moved at all. And so we know there's a challenge there. Also don't see any reason why we wouldn't be the ones to figure it out for everybody else.
And if anybody can do it, let's say you guys can. Yay. No, I really do appreciate that, and appreciate all the work that has gone into it and going forward.
Piyush?
I want to thank you, all three of you, and congratulate for you for the outstanding work. And I want you to be not, be too hard on yourself for not being, you know, way ahead like you thought that others have been. Because the work you are doing is extremely difficult, and you had a big task in front of you. So I think the most important part was putting this framework in place. I think that right there is a big achievement. So thank you for that. And I'm sure as we pursue this in future years, we'll start seeing the results. I do have one question. How are the expectations of the PAR framework communicated to the students so they understand, you know, what the expectations are, et cetera?
Yeah. So as we think about, that's going to come via teachers, right? So teachers need to know kind of what those set expectations are as we think about, every classroom should have an attention signal, every classroom should have a procedure for turning in independent work. So giving our teachers kind of that list of routines and procedures that they need to have in place is really that starting point. So as we think about shifting data, you know, our outcome data, it really all starts with that preventative work. And that is going to take, you know, three to five years as we continue to hone in on our effective habits of supporting our students through those routines and procedures. And that's why that important piece of professional learning, so that our administrators are getting consistent messages from, you know, leadership, and then those messages trickle into how teachers communicate to our students, and our students receive those messages.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Thanks for the report. Great job.
Great questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. However, we have no speakers today. So we'll move on to item number nine, the consent agenda. Are there any items removed from the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval? Kathy?
I would move approval of consent items 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 from the agenda.
Do we have a second? Dawn?
A second.
Any discussion? Any conflict statements? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvolovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. Next, we have item 10, first reading, but there are no items. So we'll go on to item second reading, 11, 11.1, newly annexed property, the city of Lincoln. Barb?
Yes. We considered this before, so I'm going to put this into a motion to approve, I move to approve 11.1.1 newly annexed property to the city of Lincoln as printed in our agenda. This regards the Wandering Creek site and the Lobos site.
Do we have a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvolovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. Next, we have item 11.2.1 tuition charges for 25, 26. Do I have a motion for approval? Annie?
I move we approve 11.2.1 tuition charges for 25, 26.
And second, Piyush?
I second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvolovic?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. Next, item 11.2.2, Title VI Indian Education Program. Do I have a motion of approval? Barb?
I move approval of 11.2.2 Title VI Indian Education Program.
Second, Kathy?
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvolovic?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. We have no expedited emergency actions, no items removed from consent agenda. Next, we have informational items from board committees. Do we have any items? Any from special appointments? From the superintendent?
Yeah. Thank you. So I got to start the day at 2200 Park Boulevard, hanging with Phil for Transportation Appreciation Day. And that's an awesome operation. Phil, I think in the neighborhood of 125 daily routes. Incredible team, very committed group of drivers who are performing an absolutely critical service, keeping our students safe, getting them to school and back home daily basis, day in, day out, regardless of the weather. It was a perfect day today, great day to be out there. And those team members were smiling, not merely because of the Lamar's Donuts today. They're smiling because they're actually joyful about coming to work. And so I would be remiss if I did not note that we did talk about staffing. And the fact is that you are hiring for both regular and substitute drivers as well as paras, transportation paras. And so, hey, you want to join a great team, LPS.org, look that up. Those positions are available. Great to spend a little time with you this morning, Phil. Also wanted to note that Senator Jason Prokop was a speaker at Cause Collective Nonprofit Consortium monthly meeting today. And Senator Prokop, one of our great Lincoln senators, has a very important seat on the Appropriations Committee. And just wanted to note that he urged all of us to engage. Engage with your policymakers, because he said in the absence of that engagement, decisions can get made in a vacuum or without a full understanding and appreciation for needed services. So it was a not-so-subtle hint that the state is still facing a revenue shortfall, and we're getting very close to day 70. I think today was day 65 of a 90-day session. By day 70, we'll see the Appropriations Committee put forth a budget. And just wanted to encourage folks to take up the advice from one of our senators there and engage. And speaking of that, wanted to thank Piyush for joining me. We had the opportunity to sit down with Senator Ricketts today and had a great conversation about the importance of sustaining federal funding commitments, IDEA and TIDAL. Also spoke about Medicaid eligible reimbursable services that our schools provide, very important and often yet overlooked by policymakers when we talk about Medicaid. So great opportunity to have an engaging conversation with Senator Ricketts. That's my report.
I have a picture of you like doing a ride-along on the school bus or something. Is there anything from the monthly financial report? Okay. Upcoming events, we've actually got quite a few. On April 23, we have the LPS Indian Education K-538 Promotion Event at 6:00 p.m. at Lincoln Standing Bear. April 26, we have the LPS Food Bank Extra Mile Walk at 9:30 a.m. at Lincoln Northwest. April 27, we have the Riley Elementary 60th Anniversary Celebration, 1:30 p.m. at Riley. April 29, we have the NAACP Scholar Recognition at 6:00 p.m. at the Lincoln Firefighters Hall. April 30, we have the UW Annual Meeting, 11:30 a.m., Marriott Cornhusker Hotel. May 1, we have the American Indian Student Recognition at 5:00 p.m. at the Indian Center. May 2, we have the Scottish Rite Award Framing, 4:15 p.m. at the Steve Jewell District Leadership Center. May 7, we have Chamber Coffee at 8:00 a.m. at the Chamber Office, as well as the LPS Retirement Celebration at 5:00 p.m. at the Hillcrest Country Club. May 8, we have the LEA Retirement Celebration, 5:00 p.m. at the Havelock Social Hall, and the TCA Senior Recognition, 6:00 p.m. at the Southeast Community College Gymnasium. May 12, we have the LPS Hispanic-Latino Senior Student Recognition at 6:00 p.m. at Southeast Community College. And then May 13, we have the Lincoln Board Members Retirement Celebration at 4:30 p.m. at the Steve Jewell District Leadership Center, followed by the board meeting at 6:00 p.m. We have no other public comment. Is there a request for closed session? Kathy?
I would move that we recess this meeting and go into closed session for item number one, negotiations, number three, litigation, and number seven, legal advice.
Do we have a second? Dawn?
A second.
Laura, would you call the roll?
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavastov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvolovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Danik?
Yes.
Dr. Rauner?
Yes. We are in recess.